All right. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. We are in the Honors of Administration Building. Any questions?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's on there.
Terrence Sheller.
Leslie?
Yeah, sorry. Real quick, if I can. I'm sorry for the issues tonight. We had some technical difficulties. It was like the night where everything happened. So Leslie Jacobs is online for us tonight. We had some issues live streaming as well. That's why we're recording. So Leslie, can you hear us okay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
So we had interviews for the backfill for Ryan last week, and we will be seeking a recommendation or motion.
I recommend Jared Glob.
Do I have...
Second. I'll second.
Any discussion? Leslie, any discussion?
No, just wanted to say great attendance, and I really appreciate everybody that wants to be a part of the school board. It's a big responsibility, and we were happy to have people apply. And every one of the applicants would have been a great board member. We were really fortunate with some excellent people. That's all I wanted to make sure to say.
I concur.
We all concur.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now Judge Paul Freed has sworn in. The name Jared.
You're wearing. Fill it up here.
Should we...
I knew you were a cameraman tonight, too.
A hidden talent.
Okay, if I could have you raise your right hand, sir, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Jared Glob.
solemnly swear affirm.
solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States and the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States and the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of this governing body.
And optional, so help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations again. All right.
Thank you.
And we got a couple of papers to sign. What happened? Leslie. Mm-hmm. That's it. That is all. All right, way to go. You guys, you guys, be everyone.
Thank you so much. I do want to second what was said in terms of the applicants that we had for the board. And so thank you guys so much. And we so appreciate it, and it means the world to us to have good people who want to serve and serve kids. And so.
Absolutely.
And Jared, welcome aboard. We're glad you're here. And you're going to get a crash course in one music program. None of these individuals knew, nor did I, like, with the decision the board was going to make this evening, because they can't make those decisions outside of a public meeting. And so I had no idea who was going to be sitting at the table, so I'm glad that you're here. So congratulations. Now, we do have another order of business that is related to that in regards to reorganization of the board, if you so choose. So in the month of January, January is for reorganizational session every year, where you decide as a board, who will be your president, who will be your vice president, who will be your secretary. We're one meeting away essentially, unless we have a special session of some kind between now and the end of the calendar year from reorganization, right? So is there a need to place people in positions?
No.
Truly a decision to make. I do believe that we do need to promote Sasha probably to the presidency. I think that makes sense as the vice president. I don't know that there's necessarily a need to backfill the vice presidency, but that is your decision to make as a board. And we could essentially have the secretary act in the president's place in the event the president was not was not present, if that makes sense.
That would happen anyway.
It would.
Yeah.
That person would be third in the line.
By matter of course, that would happen anyway.
Okay. So one thing that we want to consider is the fact that you do have a board policy that does state that you will fill those officer positions. You can choose tonight, it's your board, it's your agenda, to revise that board policy, if you so choose, with Board Action, to strike that language essentially just to say that we can make the decision as a board to not fill that position. Didn't know we'd be here, didn't know we'd be in this position, so certainly kind of working on some unknowns here. But that can be a decision that you make this evening, if you so choose.
I guess the question is, how do we proceed to make sure that we do this correctly?
Yeah. I would say that you need to revise your board policy first, okay? Most of the time, board policy revision requires two readings. That's not legally required. You can essentially surpass, you don't have to have that second reading. You can make that decision right now to change, revise that policy, to remove that language. That's okay. And then thereafter, you can go ahead and move Sasha into that president's role with Board Action as well. I think you need to go ahead and do that, though, here at the start of the meeting here, so.
My other also is that not all boards have a policy that if you have to reorganize, and I've been told that you can always have a discussion instead of a policy. And considering that this is the first time that this happened, at least in the 11 years I've been on the board, I don't think it's likely that it happens very often. So I think having a discussion should arise again, I think the board can handle that.
So Leslie, am I hearing from you that you do not want to revise the policy?
No, I am saying we can revise the policy.
Okay.
I have been told, I'm a fellow, that boards that do not have a policy about reorganizing in the event of a resignation, just meet and discuss among themselves who they want to fill whatever position. So it's not required to have a policy.
Gotcha. Understanding us.
So what you're saying is, we really don't need a policy, so we can just vote to rescind that policy?
You certainly could. That, well, that portion of the policy is part of a larger policy.
Okay.
But you can essentially vote to rescind that portion of the policy and remove that language, which we certainly could do, strike that, and then make the decision, of course, to move Sasha into the president's role, not fill the vice presidency. And then, of course, we'd have a secretary, which is, so.
Yeah.
Are we comfortable with that?
Yes.
So my recommendation to go ahead and rescind that portion of the policy that has that language. And so.
I make a motion.
A first and a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion that we already have? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. So then the next order of business would be a new agenda item that we just added would be item D there. I guess what we would do is add, C would have been revision of board policy. And then D will end up being the recommendation to approve board officers, which would be essentially just moving Sasha into the presidency for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year.
I shall move.
Erica's motion.
I'll second.
Erica's second motion. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Perfect. Okay.
We've got a little time left.
Thank you guys for that. I know it was a little chunky, just because it's a lot to work through, but I think we're in a good place. So we'll rescind that portion of that policy. And then obviously Sasha will take on the role of president. We will not fill the vice presidency, and obviously have our secretary in place. So, okay. Perfect.
We have Little Spartans.
Thanks for having us this evening. I'm Mallory Cameron. I'm the director of Little Spartans Preschool. And with me this evening, I have Kathy Immerman, who is our Head Start Education Coach, and she's also on the Corporation's Directional Team. So today, we're going to talk to you a little bit about the portrait of a Little Spartan. And where this comes from is from the work of the directional team that Jeremy has been overseeing and Kathy's been a part of, where they have created the document that you see here, the Portrait of a Graduate. And Mr. Duncan had tasked us, our staff, to identify how Little Spartans laid the foundation of the Portrait of a Graduate. And that's what we're going to be talking to you about today. For a portrait of a graduate, for this, under the effective communicator for any student that graduates from the Fayette County School Corporation, it's identified as a competent communicator with strong social skills. Spartans are capable of listening actively, expressing ideas clearly, collaborating with others, and engaging in meaningful discussions. They approach conflict with maturity using problem solving strategies and respectful dialogue to find clear solutions.
So within the preschool, we provide the following opportunities to lay the basic foundation for these sets of skills. So what you'll see on the right side of your screen are those skills. So our children do present calendar and weather to their peers on a daily basis. They're doing public speaking. They either read books or read tellbooks to their peers as well as to each other. They share their work that is completed. They utilize picture schedules. They participate in cooperative play with their peers. And the adults within that environment consistently are engaged in back and forth, meaningful conversations. We also participate in a social emotional curriculum by the name of Second Steps, addressing conflict resolution and self-regulation skills.
Real life ready. Spartans are real life ready, equipped with the necessary licenses, credentials, and resources to transition smoothly into their chosen careers or higher education paths. Whether entering the workforce, trade programs, military, or college, they possess the knowledge and practical skills needed for success. They are culturally aware, have a global perspective, and have been given opportunities for exposure to those different from themselves.
So what does that look like in preschool? Is that we are going to expose them to local community helpers. We are going to present opportunities for them to role play in our dramatic play centers. We are going to present them with multicultural materials within our classrooms. We will also have virtual and in-person field trips. We do participate in the message of the day in developing organization for the children to know what is coming next. And exposure to literacy materials and explaining to them what a big problem is versus a small problem, and reacting appropriately.
Agile problem solver. As an adaptable problem solver, Spartans face challenges with grit and determination. They persevere through setbacks, embrace change, and approach obstacles with a solution-focused growth mindset, never backing down from adversity.
So we are looking at, our staff is asking open-ended questions and having those conversations and prompting children to participate as equal partners in those. We're also working on spatial awareness, so, and navigating challenges within their learning environment. We're also working on perseverance and finishing a task that they start, expressing their wants and needs appropriately, and asking adults to support them in their plans of action.
Industrious worker. Hardworking and reliable, a Spartan has strong work ethic, taking pride in their responsibilities. They demonstrate punctuality, dedication, grit, and self-discipline, consistently striving for excellence in academics, extracurriculars, and professional endeavors.
So in preschool, they do have jobs that they participate in on a daily basis. They are their classroom helpers. They also are participating in non-preferred activities. They are completing tasks, and they're taking pride in sharing their work.
I love that so much.
Principal-driven leader. Spartans are respectful and responsible citizens, demonstrating integrity, empathy, and a commitment to their community. They contribute positively to society, respect diversity, and uphold ethical standards in all aspects of life.
For us, that means that we, they again, are going to participate in a social emotional curriculum addressing that conflict resolution and self-regulation. We need them to model kindness within the classroom, recognizing others' emotions and feelings and showing respect toward those, acting appropriately with words and actions, teaching acceptance that some kids need things that others don't, and also being self-aware and participating in self-reflection on both their learning and their actions. And as a side note, I think it's important to note that preschool functions on a rolling enrollment, so there may be times when children start mid-year or even later. Head Start does require children to be replaced in our classrooms up to 30 days before the end of the year. So when you hear that there's a child coming from preschool, they may have received services from 180 days to 30. So there's going to be a large gap there.
From this, our staff helped us determine some values for the preschool that we hope to instill in every child that attends. Students experience a positive school experience to inspire lifelong learning, develop a social emotional foundation in order to self-regulate, develop positive relationships with the adults in their environment, develop an academic base, engage parents as partners in their child's educational journey, and provide a safe environment to explore, make mistakes, and experience success. Does anybody have any questions?
Don't have any questions, but if you haven't been to the Little Spartans Preschool, and I'm fortunate enough to be the board member that's on the Head Start Policy Council, the work they do over there is just fantastic. The kids, the teachers, the whole environment there is so positive and such a good thing. And we have very, very needy kids, and they're having their needs fulfilled at the Little Spartan Preschool and the Head Start Program. So we are incredibly fortunate to have that here in Fayette County for our kids, because other kids don't have it, and some of them, because of our funding, we didn't lose any funding because of the government shutdown. There are Head Start programs in northern Indiana that I'm aware of that had their funding stopped, so they have had to go on hiatus till they get it back again. And that's just something that's horrible for these kids. They need the consistency. So bravo, ladies. You do a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Free time, please. We're awesome.
Kelly Blum and Michael.
See both ends of the spectrum today.
Yes, the preschool to high school. So this ties right along with the Portrait of a Graduate. The students we brought this evening are the epitome of future graduates, so they are senior early college high school students. And tonight, I have Mr. Michael Thompson, our early college coordinator, to do a presentation. And then our students will introduce themselves and tell you about their amazing things they've done for our high school.
Well, I'm honored to be here to talk about our early college high school program with you all. In my opinion, it's one of the greatest programs that we have available here in Fayette County schools. I've given you more information than I'm probably going to cover tonight. You can read it tonight when you are home and bored and you want a little bit more information. But I want to get to our students and some of our stats here at the end. We were initially endorsed as an early college high school in 2013. We go through a reendorsement process about every four years. That process is now changing. It's going to be about every five years. We were just reendorsed last year in 2024. And each and every year, I have to input an end-of-the-year report, give data on our school and how we're doing, and that is due to SELL every single year. Currently, we have 286 students that are enrolled in our program. We have 16 credential teachers. We offer 43 different gold credit courses for a total of 127 credits, all partnered through IB Tech and/or IU. Also want to point out that WCC is also endorsed in 2020, so some of our students, and one of the students I have here tonight, has received a lot of credits through WCC as well. Here are the principles that we have to follow from SELL, who endorses us as an early college high school. The credentialing that our teachers must hold in order to be able to teach the college gold credits. Our old logo from 2013 to our brand new one that I have not truly released yet. That was a fun process. That was through the graphic design program at WCC. Their students went through designing a logo for us. Mr. Duncan was there. It was very neat to watch. They presented ideas to us. I presented what I was looking for. They went through, we gave them some feedback, and then we went back. They readjusted their logos, and then we voted on and chose our new ones. So we are now Spartan University. So our students that are in the program are a part of Spartan University, which is our early college high school program.
That is so cool.
And that was designed by one of our own students from Conroe High School in the program as well. Our why, I think there's a lot of obvious reasons of why we are offering the early college high school program, but I think in a nutshell, I can just sum it up and say, we want our students to be better prepared to be successful at the college level, wherever they go on to. I think for the families, it's saving money. For the students, it's saving time. It gives them more opportunities when they go to college. They might be able to finish a degree in three years. They might be able to finish a master's degree in five years. They may double major, add a minor, study abroad. There's a lot of benefits to being a member of our program and moving on to the college level. Here's how we stack up against the state of Indiana. I won't cover that, but it's in your packets. Last date I have was from 2021. I get this information from SELL, but they run a couple years behind, a little bit, in order to be considered an ECHS graduate. So they are a member of our program, and if they finish 15-plus transferable credits, then they graduate as an ECHS graduate. If they have 24 or more, they receive an ECHS seal on their high school diploma. Ultimately, we want our students to complete what we call a pathway or a certificate. The general studies associate degree, an accounting degree, the Indiana College Core, the ICC, and then we also offer the TC in Business Administration. So those are the four things that we're looking for out of our students. But if they have 15, that's 15 more than zero. You know, whatever they end up with, that's awesome. The ICC. So this is the Indiana College Core, and that is a 30 credit hour block of general education level courses that if you complete the block of 30, by law, all Indiana public colleges must accept those at face value. We're also seeing that a lot of private schools are deciding to take it. There's between 12 to 15 private schools now that are saying, we will take the ICC. Ball State is moving ahead of that, starting next year. Any student that goes to Ball State and they have completed the ICC, they're saying that is our first year prerequisites, you're already finished. So it's going to be guaranteed. You can start your second year at Ball State now.
It's a big deal.
15 grand.
The ICC pathway. Here's the list of courses that we offer. That's also at the very end of your packet. It looks a little bit different, but these are the classes that we offer. This is where you're trying to get a block of 30. However they want to do it, you just have to take at least one class in each category. And then we also offer the Business Pathway, and that is 31 credit hours that is guaranteed to transfer to IB Tech, but IB Tech has partnerships with other colleges and Ball State being one of those. So if we get that, we're almost going to guarantee that they're going to take all of those at every school anyone. And then those are the courses that we offer for the Business Pathway. Tuition savings. So now I'm getting into what I feel likes to be good stuff. All right. So when I do my reporting, based on last year's class, these are the numbers per credit hour at these various schools. So last year's class of 2025, we had 59 ECHS graduates out of a class of approximately 200 or so. So we're looking about a little over a third. We're getting close to a third of our students. 29 students finished the ICC. 13 finished their associate degree, general studies. One finished their accounting associate degree. One TC Business Administration. And then another 12 students had between 15 to 29 credits there.
That's awesome.
I do want to point out that I don't count our numbers, but that's changing from SELL. So those 13 associate degrees, they also finished the ICC. SELL told me before not to count them as double. Now they're telling me I can't count them as double. So my numbers are going to change in my reporting from this point forward. In addition, last year's class, we had all these different certifications, and most of these, really all of those came from students that also went to WCC. So last year's class alone finished 2,547 college credits. Scholarship amount offered, over $2.4 million to our early college high school students. Tuition savings, based on the classes that they took, whether it be IB Tech or through IU, that class alone had $658,000 in tuition savings. That's why we do it. I mean, and when you're finishing your ICC, you're basically finishing your first year of college. Your associate degree, they may not take all 60 to 70, but they're going to take the mass majority of them. You're going to be reclassified after your first semester as a sophomore or a junior right off the bat. And for our community, this is huge. If all of our courses were IU, the tuition savings would be $1.2 million. And you might, you can say if it was Ball State, if it was Purdue, if it was IU, PUI, they're all about the same cost. So we're looking at over a million dollars saved just from last year's class. And then all of our students in ECHS, including freshmen last year through seniors, tuition savings of $851,000. And these are the type of numbers that I report back to SELL. You know, what are we accomplishing within our school? So these are the numbers that I do a lot of digging to be able to get. Throughout the years, since we were endorsed in 2013, I didn't start counting till 1617, although we had a couple of kids finish the ICC. It had a different name at that point in time. But we started really tracking from 201617. So you can see throughout the years, 326 ICC completions and 39 general studies associate degrees, which our first ones only came three years ago. Tuition savings of over $3 million. Now, looking ahead to this year's class, projected, as long as they finish the courses that they say that they are going to finish, we'll have 62 ECHS grads this year, 28 complete the ICC, and 38 associate degrees this year alone. We had 39 total. This class is going to have 38. So we're almost dou- we're doubling it in one year here. And then one associate degree in accounting, and then five more students that didn't finish one or the other. All right. Also wanted to point out that our school corporation does receive funding from the ICC and the associate degrees. It's $1,500 for each student that finishes the ICC and 2,500 for each student that finishes an associate degree. So just some rough numbers here, the last, last year and this year. Roughly, this is how much money has comes into the school from these students as well. And I have heard rumors, I don't know, Jeremy, if you've heard, that they're going to get rid of the funding for the associate degree.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
And then I just want to share some pictures. So our very first group of associate degree graduates from three years ago. Mr. Bottomley puts up a lot of the T-shirts and shows where the kids are heading to school. We have little banners where they sign where they have been accepted to. Various field trips that we've taken in the last few years. Senior celebration, that's one of my favorite days of the year in early May. So we have a celebration in Robert E. Wise with every single senior, call them onstage. Families are invited to attend, and we give all their stats. Here's what they've completed, tuition savings, here's their college plans. It's a very neat day. IB Tech commencement, it's probably my second favorite day. You know, those students that do attend IB Tech and then graduate at IB Tech at Richmond High School before a high school graduation here at the high school. And there's a few more pictures of graduation. So I do want to bring up to me what I, the highlight of this is, is our students. So if they will come up, they can introduce themselves and give a little information about what they have accomplished.
My name is Isabel Starr. I am on track to complete my associate's degree in general studies. And by the end, I should complete about 63 total credits, and that's saving me about $15,000, which is a considerable amount of college saving. I plan on going to IU Bloomington, where I'd like to major in media, and I'd specifically like to concentrate in film and video.
My name is Kristen LaBoito. I am on track to complete my general studies associate degree, earning 61 college credits, which is about $16,000. I also attended the Career Center, and I did health science, and 17 of my 61 credits came from there, which I also got a TC in healthcare, a CT in dementia care, and a CTCNA.
My name is Cameron Butts. I'm going to be graduating with an associate degree in accounting. I will be graduating with 61 credits, which has saved me $16,000. My plan is to go to IU Southeast and major in human resource management.
And if you have any questions for them, they'd be happy to answer.
Thanks. Michael.
Yeah?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Michael, are you collecting stats on how many of those kids that go to college with the early college high school credits complete college? Do we have records on, on that?
I do receive information from SELL, but again, they run about two to three years behind.
So is that, is that information available? Do you have anything about those kids back two, three years ago?
I will be able to find that for you, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael, the early college high school kids don't graduate from high school early. They just graduate with college credits, correct? It's an eight sema- it's an eight semester program.
Yes. That would be up to the individual, but yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Now, we did, her brother last year finished midterm his senior year with his associate degree in accounting, but he wanted to go ahead and finish early here, so he enrolled in IB Tech to finish his associate degree in business administration out of his own pocket before he went on to IU, PUI, IU I now. But he chose to, to take that route to try to get ahead of the game.
But basically, it's an eight semester program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Saving money.
Yeah.
Great job, ladies.
Good job, guys. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Can I go back to school and do that?
Can I recoup some of the money? Did I pay down to send my kids to college?
No.
Good job, girls.
Thank you, ladies.
A motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Erica, second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, public comment? We have the statement of purposes.
Yeah, so we're going to move into the lease hearing and additional appropriation hearing related to our bond issuance for the Eastview Elementary School project. And so we'll have the lease, lease and additional appropriation hearing first, and then we'll step into four different resolutions that we'll put before you as a board related to the bond issuance as well. So Sasha, can you go ahead?
The next item on the agenda is for the board to hold at least an additional appropriation hearing in connection with the purposes, purpose bond project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the lease rental to be paid under the lease and appropriations of bond proceeds. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the lease rental and appropriation of funds under consideration. The notices for this hearing were published as legally required. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-47-3, before a school corporation may enter a lease with a nonprofit building corporation, the school corporation must conduct a hearing regarding the execution of their proposed lease agreement and whether the rental to be paid to the less leaser would build, leaser building corporation under the purpose lease is a fair and reasonable rental for the purpose improvement. Similarly, before a school corporation can appropriate any dollars, it directly receives a bond proceeding. It must conduct a hearing on those proceeds for the additional appropriation of those funds. We'll now hear from Mr. Duncan.
Yeah, so I, I hope that, I know it's, that's a lot of words. And I know it's, it's weird, because essentially, what happens is, the building corporation purchases Eastview Elementary School building and closing for at least the prepriced value, and then leases it back to the school corporation. So our building corporation, which consists of three gentlemen who met yesterday morning, have had two different meetings already with an attorney working through the backend work of this, this stuff that we're working through. But specific to the Eastview project, obviously, we've had our project hearing already. We've discussed what that project will, will look like many different times. And so I don't know that I need to go into great detail, but essentially, we're taking that crazy template, replying that to Eastview, doing that full renovation of the building, looking at the possible addition that we talked about as far as the special education area. But all of that, again, has been discussed in previous meetings, so that's essentially what we're doing at Eastview.
We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, please fill in on this, on the sheet, which is located just outside the room. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name and address, limit your comments to the proposed rent to be paid under the lease and appropriation of bond proceeds, keep any comments to three minutes, and avoid being repetitive if possible. Is there anyone on the way? Okay, no one. Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you to all who participated in the hearing. We will now close the hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Yeah, so that, so that essentially was our, our hearing. I love the opportunity for public comment, which we had none for both our lease hearing and the additional appropriation hearing. And as Sasha mentioned, we'll, we'll move into our resolutions now related to the bonds.
The view of the project.
You should write your ID on the agenda. So if you move to this.
Consideration of resolution authorizing exec- execution of the lease.
You should have your script here, like this. There you go.
I was trying to skip that. Okay.
Summarize, so.
I can summarize?
No, no, no.
Oh.
You're going to ask me to summarize.
Oh, okay. I, okay, Mr. Duncan, could you please summarize the resolution authorizing the execution of the lease?
Absolutely. As required by Indiana Code 20-47-3, after a lease hearing, the school, school board must approve the lease agreement and authorize the school board officers to execute such lease. This lease is the agreement whereby the school corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments throughout the life of the bond issue. The lease payments will be paid, the building corporation is used to pay the bondholders to repay the proposed bonds.
Could I have a motion and a second to? The rest of the, okay, executing the lease. So Leslie was the first, who also, Erica the second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay. Could you please summarize the additional appropriation resolution?
Absolutely. Additional appropriation resolution outlines the appropriation of funds received for the sale of certain school facilities to the building corporation, where portion, portions of those projects will be constructed. The resolution also specifies that any such funds will be placed in the school corporation construction account separate from all other school corporation funds and spent only on the projects. Since the appropriation will be from the bond proceeds. So all of those bond proceeds go just specifically for those bond-related tasks and projects.
Okay, could I have a motion and a second to adopt the additional appropriation resolution?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Duncan, could you please summarize the resolution signing bid contract?
Absolutely. The next resolution is the resolution assigning bids and contracts to the building corporation. At the bond closing, the building corporation will own facilities where further renovation work will be completed. The building corporation will also be the issuer of the bonds. As a result, certain contracts may need to be with the building corporation, because the building corporation will hold the money to pay the contractors. The school corporation receives the bids and their contracts and awards the bids and their contracts under state law, but then retains the right to assign those bids and their contracts to the building corporation for payment at the discretion of the board.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution signing bid and contract?
I'll make the motion.
I will second that.
I will second.
Leslie's got it.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Didn't you say? Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Can you please summarize the resolution authorizing the fourth supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking issue of the bond?
Absolutely. Last one here. This resolution satisfies the Securities and Exchange Commission requirement that a school corporation enter a continuing disclosure undertaking agreement. If it issues bonds to public investors, the agreement requires the school corporation agree to a timely, to timely provide certain financial information and provide notice of certain materials, material events, if and when they occur. So essentially, we, we have to do that continuing disclosure, which we do on a regular basis now with the bonds that we currently hold.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing the fourth supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuing, issuing the bond? None of you?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Just to give an idea where we are, we're very close to closure, to go into market for these bonds. We're on the last steps here. I know it's been a long run. We did have our S&amp;P Global phone call about a week ago. Essentially, that, that's to get a bond rating, right? So that rating is used then when you go to market for potential banks and such to be able to tell if you're a good length, or a good borrower. Can't necessarily put that out there publicly just yet, but, but it was good. The number was good, or the letter was good, I should say. And so, so yeah, so I will have more information for you very soon as far as interest rates and those types of things that we get on that bond. But we're really close to the finish line, so thank you for your hard work on, on this. And I didn't mention this earlier, Dr. Summers will be here to talk more about that, but he's, he's under the weather, and it just seems like we just can't catch a break here in the office, so. Poor guy, so. But thank you, guys.
Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from regular business meeting of October 14th, 2025, special board meeting of October 21st, 2025, executive board meeting of October 27th, 2025, special board meeting of November 6th, 2025, and executive board meeting of November 6th, 2025. The personnel report, recommendations for. Please, that's the approval of October claims number 72044272275 and a donation of $839 to. From FCN Bank to the Conrissville High School Theater.
It's in your packet, so.
Good stuff?
No motion.
Okay, do I have five motions?
I'll make the motion, sorry.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Leslie, are you still there?
Yes, I said aye.
Same side.
These have delayed my focus, focusing on me.
No, you're doing a great job.
Approval of salary increase for non-CBA certified licensed physician.
Yeah, so since Dr. Summers isn't here today, I will go ahead and go through this with you. This is the approval of salary increases for those, those individuals who are not covered by our collective bargaining agreement. So in our collective bargaining agreement, the very, one of the very first things in there will state, these are the positions that are covered by the CPA. Here are those that are excluded from the CPA. So we have excluded positions that we still want to make sure those people are taken care of. They receive raises. So that's our administrative staff. That's anybody on the letter of agreement. So we have lots of special education staff that are on letters of agreement. We have social workers that are on letters of agreement, and we want to make sure all those people receive those raises. So all of those are in there. You have, I believe that you have the list there as well. I think I looked at it here a few minutes ago, of those individuals and the raises that they're receiving, or their new salary amount, I should say. Yep, that's it. Sorry. So that is all there for you. Any questions about that before we entertain a motion? Okay.
Do I have a motion and a second?
I so move. Second.
Any discussion?
I'll second. I'll second.
There you go, Leslie second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yeah, so the next one is, if you remember, we've had some discussion. It has been past practice of the school corporation to around around Christmas time, give a bonus, if you will, to classified staff, those those individuals who work for us as hourly employees. We have said quite often since last year that we weren't sure we'd ever be able to do that again in the face of budget cuts, in the face of SEA one. But we crunched some numbers and we feel like Dr. Summers and I that we can we can make this happen. This is not what it usually is. It's typically five hundred dollars. But we feel like we can do a two hundred dollar stipend for each of those eligible employees, those hourly employees as described. And with the understanding, and we'll make sure our folks know this, this is kind of a step down, right, from last year or the past to a new a new future of this is going to be really hard for us to do. And so it's better than nothing. I hope I hope our people understand it's it's. It's a it's a it's a thank you. I hope it I hope it's appreciated in that way because we appreciate them so much. But but anyway, that that's where we we are on that as far as that goes. And again, those are those are our classified employees, our hourly employees, working a minimum of one hundred and twenty days during the school year, not on not not on a non-FMLA leave of absence succeeding thirty days in the current school year and actively employed as of December one. This will be on the December ten pay, so they'll have a little bit of time if they want to use that money to do some Christmas shopping. I do want to say this, in the past, this always coincided with payment for our certified teachers. That was tag, right? So certified teachers would get their tag allotment at about the same time. But that money is not coming to our teachers this year only because, I shouldn't say that. I'll start by saying this. I think we've talked about this before, but the state of Indiana changed the way the tag was configured. Essentially, they have tiers that are seventy five hundred, five thousand, thirty five hundred, a good sum of money. To put that in perspective, most that most years, our tag allotment would end up being about six hundred and fifty dollars a teacher. That all blew up. We can't, you know, we also couldn't have more than twenty percent of our teachers receive any type of money for tag. So we went back and we had lots of discussion with our our association and and they they essentially were not in favor of moving forward with tags. So we just pushed pause and we're waiting. We wanted to make sure it was equitable and fair for every teacher to be able to do that. So I do want to mention that as part of the conversation because that that money's not available to them. Now, obviously, we just ratified a teaching contract, so they just received their back pay, which hopefully was 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 helpful for them in Christmas season. But, yeah, so it'd be my recommendation to approve that two hundred dollars for those eligible employees as presented, so.
Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll get a second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Any person wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personal personnel or students must be discussed in private.
Can I make one comment for everybody? As band's president, I'd like to invite all of you to the marching band honors night Thursday night, seven o'clock in the Live Bar Forum. This is kind of the conclusion of our marching season. We're celebrating band's first gold rating ever in scholastic competition. So come out. This will be the last performance of the music.
Derek, what'd you say that date time was?
Seven.
It's Thursday.
Thursday at seven.
This Thursday.
Thursday at seven and Robert E. Wise?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. I know, I think we talked about that once before, but super proud of our man. I saw Levi today for the first time since then, so I was pumping him up. He did a great job, so.
ISBA report?
Well, a lot, but since I am dragging, it is not something I can read off. But I sent the board members a list. ISBA is continually offering webinars, workshops. One is kind of like continuing ed. There is a discipline workshop coming up. And if any board members are interested, they need to contact Kelly because that one has a C associated with it. There is the law seminar that I believe Kelly might also have to register you for. There is the Roberts Rules of Order, which is a webinar. And it does not have, you know, you can register yourself, so that's coming up. And then one thing I want to let you know, I don't know if I have the date in front of me. I know I don't. And you guys might be able to help me because you might have calendar in front of you. But ISBA is doing a new thing. Twice a year, they're going to offer something called a coffee chat. And it is going to be an opportunity for any board member in their region, so we are region six, to assemble in the region and director's school district. So fortunately for you guys, that's right here in Fayette County. And ISBA is going to provide food and drinks, which essentially means we'll provide it and they'll pay us for it. And I think two dates. I believe the first one is in January, the second one's in August. And the one in January, I believe, is either the seventh of the ninth. It's the the Friday of the first full week. So I think.
That's the night.
Like the seventh with the ninth.
That's the night.
Yeah, the ninth. And we haven't set a time, but, you know, as board members, we rarely get an opportunity to sit and discuss issues coming before the board, issues in public education. And this is a wonderful opportunity. And not only do we get to chat with each other, but we'll get to chat with other board members from the region and hear about how they do things in their school districts. So it ought to be a really great opportunity. The mailing hasn't gone out yet, so you'll receive something in your email. And I mentioned this to Jeremy, we haven't picked a location, partly because ISBA will handle all the registration and then we'll get a total number. And I think that number will determine what area we can meet in, whether it's a small group or a larger group. And so I'll I'll keep Jeremy informed so he can help find us a location in the district. But that'd be a great opportunity and I hope our board can be there. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and I've briefly talked with Jeremy, but, you know, due to his own limitations with his health over the past month and just lots of things happening at the admin building, that it would be great if we could invite our senator and our representative again. We Fayette County, we've done that now every year for a long time. And I think it's it's really been well attended and I think our legislators appreciate it. And we did, I I talked briefly with Jeremy about maybe this time we walk the legislators through the impact of the property tax dollar reduction for us so that they can hear in real time and on the ground in our district how that's going to impact us. That's just an idea. And hopefully, we can kind of figure out a time and get them to come and make sure they're available. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. That's it.
Thank you, Leslie. I I do want to say publicly that I think, Leslie, you've missed one meeting in eleven years.
I've missed one meeting, yes.
Yeah, so it's obviously dealing with a family emergency and and that just shows her dedication to to find a way to be present, even though she's not physically present. So I just want to thank you for that, Leslie.
Thank you.
Leslie, you are parked on a road, right?
Say yes.
No.
It's hands-free.
Hands-free drive. Oh, oh.
Oh, okay.
Don't race speed, hands-free, Jesus.
Superintendent's discussion.
I think, Amaya, or is that the discussion? Yeah, which I don't think we have anything there.
Principal Director's report.
Nothing.
Terry, Kelly, Daryl? Okay.
Director of Operations report.
He's not here.
I didn't have anything this evening.
Back to me, okay, all right. Just want to give you an update on a few things here really quickly. I was at the pool today. They were installing bleachers. Tile looked great. I know we worked with our local newspaper to to help with a story I know they they put out there last week about the pool project and the delays and what caused the delays and such. And they did a wonderful job with their article. But long story short, we know we're going to have delay to our to the that project. We had hoped to be done, well, before now, right, at the end of October for for our girls' swimming season to start. That unfortunately did not happen. Progress is messy and sometimes things take longer than anticipated. There were some things with the Frazee project, too, that delayed some things there. You know, we stacked some phases. We had two phases happening concurrently over the summer that did pull some people off that that pool project. Then, of course, we had the liner issue that created some issues as well. But at this point in time, we've only moved one swim meet, actually, two, sorry. We've we've moved one to a later date in the season, right? So we don't lose that home meet. There is a meet that we have moved from home to away. And then a second meet on December the ninth that we moved from home to away that we hope we can move back to home. That's the that's the hope. But, you know, I talked to one of the swim coaches today and he's super excited about the pool and our people have been troopers. And so our our middle school swimmers are headed to Rushville to swim. And then our high school swimmers are using the Richmond pool now. There was there was an issue with the Centerville pool with the depth of diving well and some different things, that Richmond was a better fit in that regard. So so, anyway, that's just an update. I do want to, Frazee Phase Four is moving. And we were just told last week, Daryl, that that we may be done before the end of December. I'm not going to hold my breath. You know, as construction projects can change on the by the day. But but it is coming along. The new restrooms there look awesome. They're fantastic and the building looks awesome. So, yeah, we we what else was I going to tell you? I'm on the wrong page, I wonder. I was like, that's not right. I do want to thank our fall coaches for their hard work during the fall. Boys tennis team, obviously, we're sectional champions, so just thank you for that. We're moving into that winter season. Already started girls' basketball. They played a couple of games on Saturday in the hole and won both, yeah.
Both the JV and the varsity won and by a considerable amount. It was.
Yeah.
The ladies looked really, really good and they have a home game this Saturday. So everybody needs to come.
Yeah, for sure. I do want to say the fund report is not in your packet because Dr. Summers is out ill. So that as soon as he gets back in the office, he'll email that to you. So I apologize for that. Do want to say we're not live streaming right now, but this will be put up tomorrow. But but the board does have a Facebook page now that that they're going to use to disseminate information to the public. And so go there and follow that. I did share that out on our corporation page yesterday, so. And finally, I just want to thank the community for their kindness. Thank you as a board for your kindness during my my time. And these guys have been incredible and have held down the fort in my absence and did a wonderful job of leading, like like not like, I have a hard time like disconnecting sometimes, so they did a really, really. You heard. I know. But they did a really good, they did a really good job of running of running the show and letting me have some time away. And I'm so grateful for that because, yeah, yeah, I couldn't have done it without them. And still don't know what's next. Like, I've still got some stuff in front of me that's coming, but just want to publicly thank everybody for their kindness. And the community has been so good. Like, I still get cards in the mail from people in the community that and that are just so kind. So, thank you.
Anyone for the good of the cause?
I wanted to add one thing to Jeremy's comment. You know, for the public that may see, for instance, I'm not there. Dustin wasn't feeling well. Jim, our CFO, isn't feeling well, I believe. Kim, I don't think Kim's there, is she?
She's here.
She's here.
She's on the phone.
Well, I knew Kim wasn't feeling well. But I want the public to know that even when people may not appear present, they are plugged in.
Absolutely.
Even when Jeremy had the absence, he was plugged in. And like you said, this is, it's a well-oiled machine, not just a central office. But our principals know how to lead and they did not miss a beat. And I will say as a board member, we certainly missed Jeremy's daily guidance because we do get communication with Jeremy just about daily when he's able to to do that. And we missed that, but we communicated among ourselves. And we tried to just keep our balls up in the air and and going. So I just want to, the public to know that this is a really dedicated group of people that support each other from the board down to our teachers. And we're really grateful.
For sure.
Anyone else? Okay. No change in the terms?
I'll make the motion. Come on, Chris.
You.
I got you on that one.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.